To the Pickle City Commission regular meeting Tuesday, June 17, 2025, we will begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Vedder?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Homan?
Present.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Here.
Next on our agenda is adjournment to executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, dispo or compensation of the city manager or clerk. City clerk.
Mayor, I have motion that we adjourn to executive session.
I would second that.
Who did second it? Can the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
We adjourn to executive session.
We are back on the record. Need a motion for adjournment from executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, can I have a roll call please?
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Ross?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
All right, now we will have a presentation by the fire training committee. Oh, I need a motion to approve business agenda.
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Now we will have a presentation by the fire committee.
Good evening, my name is David Ross, Chair of the Fire Training Committee. We were supposed to present at the last commission meeting, I think there was a communication hiccup. I don't know if I sent an email to the five of you, I don't know if any of you received it.
I didn't get it, that's why, and I wasn't here, but I did not get it. So, I heard that you were here and then you guys left. But you would have been heard had you just said, hey, you want to present, so.
Usually we figure since we present at the beginning of the meeting that...
That's all.
That's okay. I figured I would start by giving an honest update on our progress. We continue to make progress, but I'll be honest, I... It's, we're not where I would like to see us currently. I figured we'd be further along than where we are right now. But we're doing the best that we can with minimal cooperation. Just to give you a rundown, it's been a while since we've been in front of you, but I wanted to keep everybody in the loop. Earlier this year, we sent out a document request for more information from Bowling Green University. We did that with the assistance of our independent counsel, Mr. Conard. And that was successful, we were able to get, I think it was around 900 documents from BGSU. Some of that is duplicative of what we received from the city. But that was earlier this year. And back in February, we sent out a number of interview requests. I think it was about a dozen, to various individuals. And today, we haven't heard anything from anyone. It's been radio silence. And obviously that's frustrating for us, it makes our job a lot harder. All we have to go on essentially is this pile of documents that we have had to sort through ourselves. Which, you know, you can imagine how difficult that task is. But, I think we believe that we're in a place where we could wrap this up. You know, potentially by the end of this summer, based on the information that we have. It's just, our frustration is that we feel like there's, we just don't have the cooperation that we need to give the best report that the public, in our opinion, deserves. But, you know, like I said, we've, we've been working, taking the documents that we've got and trying to make something of that. There's no map that we're using to go off of this. We're all, we're just kind of doing this ourselves and doing the best we can. Obviously, we don't have a staff, we don't have a big budget. We're, and we, you know, all have full-time jobs. One thing we wanted to talk about tonight. I think when we started this project, we envisioned our final report, it would, you know, be a lengthy report. And it would have, you know, legal-style citations. And that would be what we submit to you, the commissioners. But what we've come to realize is, going through all these documents and trying to draft all this and do all these citations, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot of work. And I'm not saying that we won't get it done, we'll get it done. But at one of our prior meetings, one of the committee members proposed an idea, and we just wanted to run it by you tonight, that maybe instead of a lengthy, rigging report, that maybe only a handful of people will actually agree the entire thing. What if a report was done with citations and all that, but in the format of a detailed PowerPoint? That would be more of a visual journey of what happened and what we found, what our observations are. We kind of thought that that might be easier, and then we would present that and give the opportunity for everyone to ask questions. That was kind of our thinking. Joe, I don't know, if you have anything you want to add to that, or?
You know, I think what David's talking about is, we've had over 7,000 pages of documents and emails, studies, reports. So, the attorneys put those into a Bates file. It's three separate files, like 2,000, 3,000, 3,000. So, we've had to organize that in site references, so we know what we're talking about. We received documents from the city, a flash drive from the city when we started. And then we acquired a lot more documents from citizens who came to our meetings and a lot of their independent work on their time and on their dime to show us things that they uncovered. And we've got to review all that, and we need to add that all in. So that's all been added in. So, these last few months, we've been putting all those 7,000 pages together. And like David said, a lot of it's duplicitous, but we've had to figure it through and ferret out that. You know, we're just trying to figure out the best way, because there's a lot of individuals, moving parts. Putting it together in reports, almost like Moby Dick. You know, how many people are going to sit and read it, and then you see this, and it refers to that, and you kind of got to go back and forth. But we just think the best way for a citizen or anybody else to consume the information that we gathered is to present it in a PowerPoint. So, we can show it, and we can speak it, and then, you know, we'll have all, we'll attach a page where you can click on and you can see all the files. So everything will be there, nothing will be here.
I, I'm less concerned about the format, right, than I am the actual information. So, as long as the, you know, the questions that were, were asked and any other questions that you all have decided to add to this throughout the process are answered, the format is really, in particular to me, I, it's too perfect, I don't care, as long as the information is there.
And my comment would be, hopefully it could be noted, and then if someone had more information, they could go back and do the research to see where your point came from.
Also, we don't want to use the Plaza as a venue, because we have mic problems there, transmission problems there. So, if we could do it here, with you guys giving the presentation, would that work?
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was one question that we would have had anyways, is where, that would be the preferred place to present, so.
We just want to make sure everybody has it. Our video board is working, and we're able to broadcast here. So, I think this would be a better venue.
And I think Frank, to get back to your point, I, we agree, we want to put out the best report possible. I think the frustrating thing for us is just, nobody wants to sit down and talk to us. Well, we'll mention that in our report, obviously, that, hey, here's who we sent an interview request to, and we haven't earned anything back, so. The report can only be as good as the information that we've got, obviously. So, if that's just from the documents that we've got, then we'll make do with that. I mean, we'll do the best we can with that.
Not to ask specific names on the list. Are these individuals who are current city employees, former city employees?
I don't have the list in front of me, but, I'm... Former.
Former?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mainly former.
Yeah.
People that have firsthand knowledge of what happened. They, you know, we're here, we're involved. That would be the most helpful, obviously, that's obviously the best case in here, but...
Have you started doing, or actually asked for any interviews for people who have spent numerous hours gathering evidence over this?
I think we've gotten probably the most documents, or a substantial amount of documents, from members of the public that have done their own research. And that's been really helpful.
Have you reached out to them, to speak with them, or interviewed them?
We've, we've met, we've, I mean, most of them have come to our meetings, and we've had interviews at the meetings. We also had breakout sessions where we did not meet as a committee, but we did meet at the library, you know, a couple of committee members, you know, meet one-on-one with members of the public, they can share information as they want. And we have gotten, you know, a lot of information, but just no interviews.
With, you don't need to go into any kind of detail with it, but are, how's generally the sentiment been with the lawyer that you guys have? Is he good? Do you like him? Do you want to change in the relationship? Is there anything concerning with that?
I...
He was the right fit for what we're doing.
Yeah, I think he's been a great fit. He's been helpful.
To dear.
He was the one that, kind of like I said, drafted the document request of Bowling Green, which worked out for us, we got almost 1,000 pages of information. He also was the one that drafted the interview request. We did a formal template, sent it out to all these individuals. We just haven't heard back, so.
I think we are acutely aware of the difficulty of the committee, and we're appreciative of your time and labor.
And work.
Yep. And I don't think, as for me, at least, I'm not expecting you to complete that report by a certain date. I think you need to have the time to do what you think is a decent job, and then we're prepared to receive it.
Thank you for taking the time to do it, volunteer.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, but before that, I want to read one of the rules of conduct for City Commission. And it's that any non-citizen may also participate in public conduct if an ordinance or resolution made part of the agenda affects his or her business located within the city of Pickwa or utility service that they receive within the city of Pickwa. Any non-citizen shall state his or her name and either what business he or she operates that's being affected by an ordinance or resolution or what property address inside the city limit that he or she is receiving utility service. And with that, next up is the consent agenda.
Mayor would ask that we would consider each of the issues in the consent agenda individually, please.
We'll start with the first one.
Approval of the minutes from June 3, 2025, the regular City Commission meeting.
I move the approval of the minutes of the June 3, 2025 regular commission meeting.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next.
Resolution number 74-25, a resolution appointing a member to the park board.
Who is that member?
It is Alan Subler, and he's new.
He's here?
He's new.
He's new. All right. Need a motion to approve that?
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is resolution number R-75-25.
A resolution appointing a member to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that would be Kirby King, and he is new.
I would move the approval of resolution number R-75-25.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And last in the consent agenda is resolution number R-76-25.
A resolution to transfer ownership in an issued liquor permit for Bing's Place Inc., 401 Weber Street, Pickwa, Ohio.
This is just a transfer of ownership, there's no objection from the police chief or law department?
Mayor, I would motion to be adopt resolution R-76-25.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries. Next is new business, and we'll begin with resolution number R-77-25.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase-release agreement with Hutton Pickwa for land described in Exhibit A.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. The resolution before you, R-7725, is a resolution to authorize the sale of .52 acres of land on US 36, which is currently used as an access and utility... uh, which is currently used as an access and utility easement to our water tower in that location. Uh, there is a developer who is interested in consolidating parcels and that access and utility easement in between those two parcels uh, is in the way of the ability for them to consolidate those. Uh, as we've worked through with those properties, uh, there is no challenge for the city to vacate that alley, or excuse me, the easement, provide that to the developer to acquire and, um, combine uh, and then have a access and utility easement in another location to serve the needs of the city. This has been reviewed by the utility department and there are no concerns with negative impact to our ability to provide services to the water tower. Uh, the law department has reviewed the agreement that is before you. Um, and I want to make it clear that this would allow the developer to consolidate the parcels, but to be able to do that, they would have to go in front of our planning commission to replat and, uh, lay out the new easements, uh, as well as if and when they determine they are ready to construct something. Uh, they would have to receive a zoning permit, uh, for the potential demolition or construction of any structures.
What's it currently zoned as?
Uh, I don't know that I have the zoning of the property. Uh, no changes to the zoning of the property are proposed or, uh, are currently being requested.
Would during such merger, if it happens that the property it's merging with is zoned differently than it is, does that, is that a consideration of the planning commission?
Yes, it would. Uh, I do believe all three parcels are, are zoned the same.
Okay.
But, but that is, uh, that would be dealt with as part of the, the planning. It would be a separate process associated with that.
Okay.
Any other comments from commissioners? Public comment, Kim Heisler?
Kim Heisler. Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. Uh, just had a, a question. I was trying to look through there. There was a lot of information. Is this basically where the tire shop is?
Is Bridgestone a tire shop? Yes. Yeah. So it's the Bridgestone and the Chinese buildings, uh, that are, are next to each other, correct?
Okay. So looking through this paperwork here, it says, purchase price $10. In addition to the purchase price, the consideration, blah, blah, blah. So what exactly is, is $10 the purchase price for that?
So I believe our law, uh, director could certainly speak to the typical reason that we do, uh, whether it's a dollar or $10, I mean, that's a standard amount. Yeah.
I mean, you guys were talking about a half an acre, right? Am I wrong?
Correct. Again, this is to vacate what is currently an access and utility easement to allow them to consolidate that. Uh, but yes, the easement itself is a half an acre.
Okay. So how does $10?
Yeah, so contract law doesn't allow for, uh, sale or purchase for $0. Principle called consideration, which means a bargain for exchange. Generally, when you see items that go for a dollar or $10, uh, there has to be a nominal dollar amount in order to legally have a contract between two parties.
Okay. So maybe I don't understand. So who owns that land now?
The city of Pickwa owns that land. And there is a utility and access easement across that property to get access to our, uh, it, it is used for two purposes. It currently has power lines, but it also is used as access to our water tower.
That is in between?
It's a driveway on the back part. There's a, there's a map in here.
Yes, I, I was looking at that map. I was just trying to understand.
We're essentially selling them a driveway for $10 so that they can combine those parcels and develop something, right? We're, we're not sure exactly what it is, but, but my, my, this is just my assumption is that they will combine both of those parcels, clean them, and then put something new there. And in order to do that, we need to move our driveway to the water tower that runs through the one parcel to behind it.
Right, which is a triangular piece that's behind it that says that, okay, so.
Correct.
Is there an equal, do we own that land in back too?
We, we own the land where the water tower is, yes. Yeah.
Okay. So I guess I just really don't understand that if it's a half an acre, how $10 is adequate?
Again, we are, uh, the developer is entering into an agreement to develop the property. Uh, that is, we are vacating the easement. We are allowing them to move the utility easement there and they will be consolidating those properties to develop them into a higher and better use.
And it's that better use for the, the city of Pickwa that's at issue here. Uh, the city is basically just sitting on it with, doing nothing. Um, we would like for something to happen with it, but for something to happen with it, it has to go to a private owner like it is right now. Uh, now, we might be able to try to sell it for like $10,000 or something like that. But if that's not worth it to the private owner, then they're not going to buy it and that's just going to sit there being unused.
Yeah.
Can I, can I look for city property at a great, great discount then? If, if I got an idea to put on?
Yeah, I mean, if you're willing to develop that property into something that will, will generate.
Well, if I do, I'll be looking for a deal like that.
I'll sell it to you for a dollar if you find it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I'll, I'll point out that this is a precedented activity. Uh, I think most recently, we gave a very cheap piece of land to, uh, Mr. Hamilton, uh, for, um, various purposes so that he could better utilize it for, for his organization. Um, and so this is a.
Unprecedented.
Yeah, this is a thing that we, we've done before, um, for the benefit of the community.
Another comment card. It just says Saleh, or I think, I'm not sure. You need your whole name on here and. Yep.
Hello. My name is Saleh Larkson. It was on the first one I filled out, so.
Oh, it's going to be on each one, but that's all right. And 1806?
Yes.
Okay.
So my first question is, on the agenda was the fire update, but we weren't allowed or brought, allowed to comment on that?
An update and then, but.
It's on the agenda though.
Yes.
And so agenda items are to be public comment by your rules. Is that not correct?
No.
It's not.
Work, you're, you're to comment on this topic right now, though. That's what you're talking about. We're talking about resolution 77-25.
And yet the agenda had both that other update and this.
Ma'am, I'll ask again to talk about 77-25. I'll ask you to sit down.
I am. I'm trying to understand.
I just.
The rules because this is my first meeting.
All right. Well, no, it's not your first meeting. I've seen you here before, but the bottom line is, is that you need to talk about this topic for right now.
Okay. So this resolution is to actually do something with land, to sell it, to act like a realtor. You have property, you're going to sell it. You're giving it away for less than its real value and you have precedent. Okay. So is the precedent to make sure that the land that the city owns goes away at less than value? Because that doesn't feel like a benefit to taxpayers to me.
The land being developed is a benefit to the taxpayers.
But the land that's being given away doesn't feel like a benefit because it's not, dollar-wise, a half an acre right now is going for $12,500. To sell it for 10 does not.
Develop as well within the city's ability to do. This isn't a just random acre. This is a particular acre.
Yes, it is.
Particular spot.
Um, one that has been highly contested over the last year. I might remind you.
Contested how?
You can review the meetings to see.
Oh, you're the one bringing it up. I'm just asking. Did you want to buy it?
When it's highly contested.
Did you want to buy it?
When it's highly contested, it wasn't put out for, uh, public consideration. It was designated to one particular company. That doesn't sound like public bidding. It doesn't sound like public notice. It doesn't sound like anything that the law says you guys are supposed to do. I'm just concerned. I'm a concerned citizen. That's why I'm showing up and I'm at the mic. And the amount of trust that the city has lost over the last six years due to the battery boom and all that stuff, toxic waste, all of that stuff. This is not improving that by having an agenda item that we don't get to comment on and we're forced into the second one, not the first one, the second one. That doesn't feel like Sunshine Meeting Law adherence to me at all. And according to Attorney General Yost, you guys are supposed to make sure that you're following the rules of the Sunshine Meeting Laws. If you're not, it's up to me as a citizen to enforce them. Isn't that interesting? It's up to me to let you know as a citizen what the requirement is if it is unwritten in those meeting rules. If it is not in the Sunshine Law that it gives you the right to do it, guess what? You don't get to do it if we say no. That's how it works. And in the Sunshine Law, it's specifically quiet to this thing that you're doing where you have meeting agenda points and non-agenda points. Oh, we can talk if it's not on the agenda after the meeting. No, it's silent to that. There is no designation that says you're allowed to have agenda and non-agenda. Look it up. Do your job. Sign an oath. You're required to keep the rules of the law of Ohio as well as Sunshine Meeting Ohio Revised Code. How can I trust at any level whatsoever you, five people, as the legislative body of Pickwa, you're the only ones authorized. That's it. Not those guys, not the city, not the lawyer guy over there to the left, you guys. You five are the only legislative authority in this town. That's it. That's what it says in the charter. You're the only ones authorized to do this thing and yet you rely heavily on the city recommending ordinances and resolutions when you guys should be listening to your constituents and putting forth your own amendments, your own resolutions that make it clear that you're listening to the people.
Time's up. Thank you.
Just, uh, clarify, while these, uh, Sunshine Laws might be silent on what constitutes business and non-business, agenda, non-agenda items, the Charter of the City of Pickwa is not, and the City of Pickwa does outline very specifically what the requirements are for various business items. And the Charter is where the requirement that there be public comment for each voting, voted on item on the business agenda. And since a presentation is not something that we're voting on and is not part of the business agenda, as per Robert's Rules of Order, uh, there does not need to be a public comment phase on that. Um, however, that is what the general comment, uh, public comment period is for.
All right. I have no other comment cards for.
Mayor, I would move the approval of resolution, resolution number, uh, 77-25.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is resolution number 78-25.
A resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Community Development Allocation Program Application for Program Year 2025 and authorizing the city manager to submit the application to the Ohio Development Services Agency Office of Community Development.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, resolution R-78-25, uh, deals with the bi-annual, so every other year, uh, allocation program for CDBG, uh, through the federal government, the Ohio Development Service, Ohio Development Services Agency, uh, and the Office of Community Development. Uh, this resolution would authorize, uh, the city to, um, ask for the application of funds. It is not allocating any expenditures. Uh, the city's allocation for the program 2025 cycle is $150,000. Um, eligible CDBG activities, uh, generally, uh, qualify under the low to moderate income or LMI standards or there is, uh, a elimination of slum and/or blight, uh, on the project area. If we apply, uh, the city will be notified, uh, by October if we are granted the $150,000 in funding. Uh, and then, uh, further beyond that, we will be required to go through the process for each project uh, and would be obligated to spend that $150,000, uh, by August 31, 2027. Um, I would note as well, uh, there are obligations in terms of, uh, our department notifying and having meetings of which, uh, there has been substantial notification in multiple, uh, different media, whether that's newspapers, whether that's our social media or otherwise, uh, about potential meetings, uh, for our CDBG program. If there are any questions that you have, um, I would note generally this funding goes to demolition or clearing activities. Um, it can also go to land acquisition, street improvements, uh, or other, uh, projects that meet the qualifications under the program. There any questions?
I saw the article in the paper about the public hearings that are coming up. Do you have those dates?
Yes. So tomorrow, uh, from 1:00 to 2:00 is our first meeting, uh, and that is held here in the commission chambers. Uh, the second meeting would be held Monday, June 23rd, uh, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. here at the commission chambers, uh, to discuss, uh, those two programs. If somebody has specific questions and is unable to attend, they can also email our Community Development, uh, Manager Cindy Potter. Uh, and I have her email address or phone number if somebody is interested. I'd be more than happy to talk with them, uh, about that. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? Public comment, Kim Heisler?
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. Um, I took a look at this. Mom and dad called me, um, this morning and wanted to make sure that I was aware that this was going on. I know you guys have it on Facebook. I've since now found that out. But when mom was telling me about it, I thought, I'm going to go out and find more information when the meetings are, what time, where it's going to take place. I looked on the city website. I couldn't find it anywhere. And I'm wondering why there is a link. And I contacted Cindy Potter and she said, well, you know, it's in the, uh, community calendar. You just scroll down and it's down there. When I scrolled down through the link that I had, it did not, it took me to a broken link. Um, and it kind of comes back to the same question that I have. If there's activities or events happening and we already have a City of Pickwa website, why can't we put some kind of link or something on that page of community development that says, hey, this is going on? Also, if you want to find out more, go to our Facebook page because I haven't been on you guys' Facebook page and it seems like that's where you guys advertise stuff. But you have to go there instead of going to the City of Pickwa. So you have to go to many different places to get the information you're looking for. So if there's any way that you guys can add links, this goes back to like the Kitty Spade and Neuter thing. You guys are going to try and put links in. Uh, you had mentioned that, Mr. Mayor, Manager. Um, to make it easier and make it all in one spot, just a link to, to Facebook, just a link to the community events and stuff like that instead of hunting and pecking.
Kyle, is that.
Instead of waiting on getting a newspaper to find out about what's happening tomorrow.
The dates that you just read out on, that I listed on our website.
I do believe they are. I mean, I, I don't know that, you know, again, we put it on our website. I guess you would like it in a certain way. Um, we could certainly look at doing it a different way. I mean, it, it lives in our calendar of events. We post it. We put it in the newspaper. We do as best we can, but there are certainly additional items that we can add more notifications to.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to have it on the community development page where, you know, it has like a link or something. And again, I went to a community calendar and it went to an open, it went to a, um, a broken link, so.
I just opened it.
Yeah, I just went to.
Yeah, that's fine. I sent screenshots of my broken link and how I got there to Cindy. So you can talk to her about it because there's.
If you just go to pickwahio.com, or I don't know what link you had or where you got it, but, uh.
I see that. She sent it to me. I went right there, but then I went the route that I did and it wasn't there, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just went to it on pickwahio.com.
Did it come up?
It does.
You're spending a, a lot of money on software and stuff like that. Hopefully, maybe you can give me their name so I can tell them how I got there and fix that because I can't be the only one having that problem, so.
He just went there and it came up.
I understand. When Cindy sent me the link, I went straight there too. It went straight there then. I'm saying. I sent it after she told me where I was and it took me to a community calendar of a broken page, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Saleh?
So.
So, for this resolution...
Did you say your name?
Soleil Larksen, 1802 West...
That's one I never had, sorry.
So, the City of Pickwa is a quiet little town. It's actually nice to be here. What isn't nice is being disrespected. When the citizens are disrespected and the processes begin to be broken, and the Commissioners say, oh, you know, it's just broken, and we'll have to fix it. When hundreds of thousands of dollars are spent on software, the expectation is that it works from the get-go, that there's actual IT testing, because when you look at IT testing, it's 300 grand a year for Avero. So you would expect, I know there's cybersecurity, but if we're going to outsource our IT department to do these things by Avero and other companies that cost lots and lots of money, I would expect them to be working from day one, from moment one, from day one, and for the hell of a break. I would expect there to be no mistakes. When there are these kind of mistakes, it implies lackadaisicalness. It implies a low adherence to quality protocol. And being an ISO 9000 quality reviewer myself, I can tell you, this is lame. When these mistakes are made, it looks bad on you five. It looks bad on the city. And it looks bad on the citizens that they supposedly don't care where their tax dollars are spent. Well, I think you're incorrect if you think that's not true. The citizens of this state, of this city, will come with full force to eliminate the positions and the people who are not getting it right and getting it done well. We're asking for you guys to pay attention. We're asking for you to really pay attention. We don't care about growth nearly as much as you guys do. What we care about is that the growth we have is sustainable, it's planned, and that it accurately represents the people of Pickwa. We don't want five power-hungry people. We don't want 10 power-hungry people that just want to get their agenda across. We actually want people that care about us. And if you're not able to do that, I would call upon the Lord Jesus Christ to touch each and every one of your hearts, to remind you what true caring is. Because it isn't polluting the land and the soil. It isn't polluting the air. And it isn't not listening to your constituents and talking down to them. It is actually doing what you hear and making sure, when you guys have subpoena power and you can make sure that interviews are held with the Fire Committee and you don't use it, that doesn't look good for you. When you allow the city manager to just say, oh, well, you're allowed to make your comments, it doesn't look good for you. When you allow the city manager to trespass people and then have a suit filed against the city that then increases the outgoing flow, $26,000 a year in premiums, doesn't look good for you five, all five of you, because you guys have to come together on all these issues. And if you don't, it doesn't look good for you, and it doesn't look good for reelection. So I'm asking you to really consider on every resolution, have you done your due diligence? Do you really know where the process is broken? I do. It's broken way before planning. Needs to be fixed. I haven't seen you guys make any recommendations to fix that process, and I've been watching for a year. Yeah, I'm an ISO 9000 quality auditor. I can see things from far away. The first meeting I went to, Paul said he doesn't know how to run a business. And my first thought was, wow, how is he going to run a city that has 1,000 businesses? Oh, well, Joann Fabrics is going under. Nobody's helping them. Big Lots already went out. Town and Country going down. Oh, but we got to have a company come in, build a big data center that gets... They're supposed to have 1,000 employees, but everyone that Amazon and Bill only has 35. Well, we lost 35 employees to Town and Country, Big Lots, and Joann Fabrics. I see a net zero growth. We want you to pay attention to the whole picture, not just individual situations. Thank you.
Valerie Mulligan. Does this apply to your business at all?
It does.
Okay. That's what you got it...
Thank you for asking that, because I actually had a request in for the last resolution too.
I didn't see that, but...
Yeah, I did. Because Operation Veteran Caregiver Support is expanding. It's exponential. And we are looking for space. We are looking for support. We are looking for community. I would love to have a piece of property for $10. Lord help me, I'd really love to have a piece of property for $10. When I hear $25,000 per acre out of the water treatment plant, I wonder why we're selling a half acre for $10, but that's okay. We're past that resolution. You guys already passed it. It's a done deal, and I understand that. But yes, our organization is growing exponentially, and we are in the desperate need of support. So I wanted to know a little bit more about your block grant, because I'm struggling to find adequate information to see... I heard you say, Kyle, that there was some of it's being used for street improvements. Is any of it being used for handicap accessibility downtown?
It's not being used for street improvements. I'm not sure. I said that it can be used. There's eligible, this 25, 26, excuse me, is not being used for anything yet, right? So we are asking the federal government and the state to authorize us to have the $150,000.
Right. I know how to write a grant, so clearly I run a nonprofit, so I really do know how to write grants. When you write for a grant, even a block grant, you do have to outline what your intent is for the use of those funds, do you not?
We do not in this case, no. Generally, you would. In this case, there is a list of eligible reimbursable type of things that we would use it for. So again, it could be demolition and clearing.
What is the city's intent for using $150,000 block grant?
As of now, as I don't believe we have any specific intent. I can tell you previously, we have purchased homes. We have demoed those homes that are in blight areas or that are...
Like the one on Virginia Street that needs to be disposed of, that people are arguing over who the property owner is. It's been sitting for about seven years.
I'm not certain of that one, but again, it would be, we would go through the process to understand what houses are available to that program. We would assure that they meet the qualifications of that program, and then we would go through and authorize the funding or the reimbursement for that specific project. I can tell you, under the last one, again, there were, I believe, six homes that were part of that overall in that two-year period. Generally, I'm not aware that it's been used for any street improvements, as you noted. I'm not sure, at least I know that Pickwa has not done that in the last two rounds, but I couldn't tell you that that hasn't happened, you know...
Can the funds be used to make downtown Pickwa handicap accessible so that people that I serve through my business have the ability to enjoy the Lock Nine Park on Friday nights at the concerts? Because I have two veterans who were down there recently. One almost got hit at the intersection of Wada and Main Street and let me know that they'll never go back down there again. I gave them the list of the concerts for this summer, because my family has been enjoying the concert series, and we've been enjoying being at the Crooked Handle. But I'm not going to continue to put people's lives at risk for a busy intersection that has no handicap parking. It's an inadequate situation, and it's been going on since 2022, when you guys finished the study and it said what needed to be done. When is that going to be taken care of? When are we going to address it? And Paul, you can tell me there's temporary parking here, because temporary parking stinks. It is not accessible.
It is accessible, and as a matter of fact, the spaces weren't all filled.
Because people are afraid to be there because they have to cross the busiest intersection in the City of Pickwa. I would love to put you in a wheelchair and wheel you across that parking lot and wheel you across that intersection in the middle of the day, much less on a Friday night at a concert. I'm serious. I'm not, and this isn't a laughing matter. This is a very serious situation. And until you're sitting in that wheelchair or you're pushing a walker, you don't understand how significant that safety factor is.
You're yelling.
I'm sorry. I'm very passionate about making sure that the people in our community are safe, not just the people that I serve, but the entire community.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments on this resolution? I need a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution R-78-25.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries.
Mayor, we would roll call.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Holman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrosse?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number R-79-25.
A resolution amending the boundaries of the Community Reinvestment Area 3 to include additional property.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item will expand the boundaries of the existing Community Reinvestment Area Number 3. The expansion would be to the south from Fox Drive, where its current southern boundary exists. It would extend south to Exit 78 on Interstate 75, extending basically from County Road 25A west to Washington Road. The area that it's expanding over is the area that has recently been annexed into the community over the past seven months. And including this land in the Community Reinvestment Area effectively gives us the incentive tools that are typical and necessary to allow for land that has industrial development potential to be able to be developed. What you have in front of you this evening is the resolution and the appropriate exhibits to satisfy the Ohio Revised Code requirements for how you can expand Community Reinvestment Area. And so we're placing this item before you to facilitate that process. As you all are aware, there's been a continuous effort as the annexations have occurred to put in place the appropriate land use entitlements. This is just one more step in that direction in terms of preparing that property for the development potential it's suited for. And by adopting this resolution this evening, we'll be in that much better shape when there's opportunity to present themselves. Lastly, I just want to note real quick, there is a map that's included in three different spots in the packet, in Exhibit 82 and 83, and then also in Figure 1 in Attachment B. There was one small parcel that is a wooded area that was erroneously omitted on the original map, so we've corrected that. You've got the revised maps in front of you. We had some revised copies available in the package as well. We'll update that on the website as well. Happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? Public comment request from Nicholas Smart.
He said no.
He said no. I didn't see it.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Valerie, will this apply to you?
Yes, mine is questions for answer.
Thank you, ma'am. Kim Heisler?
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. A couple of questions in this. Why was this not annexed the last time with the other annexations? Has it just come available just now, or...
This isn't an annex, I don't know.
Or, I mean...
It's a change in the Community Reinvestment.
Okay. Okay, so that's...
It gives it a legal distinction.
My lack of understanding then.
Yeah, the Community Reinvestment Area gives it a legal distinction with the state that allows us to do things that are a little more tax exempt, so that it's easier to develop businesses in that area.
Okay, so this is that little tiny little wedge then? That shows on the...
Sure. It's a pretty big wedge.
It's a wedge, yeah.
Well, the green part, okay. Okay, so I do have another question that's really kind of pressing that's come up in more from just me and other people. But so, the Agenda Packet wasn't released until today. I don't know, somewhere around 10 o'clock or something. So we really didn't have a whole lot of time to take a look at the packet, and there's like many pages in here. I don't feel like it's adequate enough time to be able to look at this to understand all the numbers and stuff. Maybe other people do. But it would really have been nice to have like a full day's worth of being able to look at the Agenda Packet and the information to be able to ask correct questions.
Are we able to do better and give them more time to review?
Yeah, typically, it goes out on Friday, but a lot of times the items are left open. And so with the, what we have in front of us right now, a lot of those items that are out of our hands didn't come in until Monday, so we didn't update the pack until Monday.
Still had to ask.
Today. We didn't get it till today.
Yeah.
And the question has been asked multiple times prior, and the answer is always the same.
Well, we can endeavor to do our best, but we're not required to even submit a package. It's the agenda that's the item that has to be noticed 24 hours ahead of time. We've been doing the best to get the packets out, but sometimes, again, the information isn't available to be put in the packet until the last minute.
Yes, I understand. The minimum is what you guys strive for. We're asking to do more than the minimum and to allow us. You guys, you five guys up there, I'm assuming don't get it before we do. If you do, then I don't know why we can't get it at the same time if it's already been approved.
It gets revised how many times by the time we get it? I mean, we got it, and it was revised, and so they had to send out another copy.
Okay, so how about, how about you guys set stuff back like three days so that we can at least get 20, 24 hours ahead of time? That would be wonderful. That's something that you have the authority to do.
We'll do what we can. We'll do what we can, it's all...
But you've said that year under year, and we want you to strive for a better saying.
Tell you what, we'll do what we can. Ohio Administrative Code says we have to put out the agenda. They do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd just like to address that as well, because in the past, excuse me, in the past, we've run into where we've had to have numerous revisions between Friday and the commission meeting, and it's created confusion amongst the public about which Agenda Packet. And you guys have been subject to that as well. So we want to be sure that the Agenda Packet that goes out for the meeting is the most current applicable packet and not one that's been revised in between. So we only want to put the information out one time. It's not to confuse anybody.
Soleil? Quiet, please.
Soleil Larksen, 1802 West... So, again, mediocrity. Attorney Yost, Attorney General Yost specifically states for the Sunshine Meeting Manual and Rules for the State of Ohio that the public officials... Do you consider yourself a public official, Paul? Do you represent the City of Pickwa in a public way? Yes or no? Okay. Didn't say on his mic, so had trouble hearing him. So, the Attorney General has a very specific opinion that he puts in writing that says he expects, desires, and will enforce the city's going beyond the bare minimum to encourage openness, transparency, and responsibility by the public officials. This is a very easy fix. You guys ought to be thinking of it. You're our Commissioners. You're our think tank. You're supposed to meet. You're supposed to talk. You're supposed to have ideas. And if you don't have ideas, you're supposed to call on the citizens to rev up your brains a little bit to have some ideas. I have one. Change the rules. They don't get to have the Agenda Packet put out three days ahead of time. They have to put it out two weeks ahead of time with their last agenda, or they don't get to have that ordinance and that resolution to even be put in front of you guys, because the citizens need to have time to review the information. This is an easy fix. There are too many emergencies that come before this commission that aren't real emergencies. The one coming on the agenda later tonight, I'll have something to say about that.
It's not an emergency.
It's, they're not emergencies. They could be planned for. They could be put in normal procedure. There's no need for a lot of the things that come before that absolutely are saying, we don't want you guys to have time to think about it, and we certainly don't want the citizens to have time to think about it because they'll have to complain." We don't want to hear what they really have to say, and that's unfortunate. That is unfortunate in the United States of America, but the First Amendment right, the sunshine laws, the Tenth Amendment says, "If we don't give it to you guys, it's not yours, it's ours, the people." Not the public officials. The sunshine meeting halls interpretations are up to the people. Attorney Yoast is very clear about that. The public is to enforce it, the public is to interpret it, and if it is not clearly written, it's up to us. It's not up to you guys. So when you say what your opinion of it is, doesn't matter. You're a public official, doesn't matter. What matters with the sunshine meeting laws is the people. And if you didn't get that from reading the sunshine meeting laws, I'll give you the paragraph and send it to you because it's absolutely critical that you understand it is up to people to interpret those rules. And all we have to do is take the instances where you have all violated it to the court, 25 bucks, get a magistrate's, boom injunction, and you guys can't even do business. So really think hard about this, you guys. I've given you the process that is broken, you five have the power to fix it. If you don't fix it, doesn't look good, doesn't look good at all. Doesn't look like you care, doesn't look like you can think, and it doesn't look like you know how to take proper action. If you can't fix the problems that the city is clearly doing time and time and time again by your subpoena power to get the records that you need to make qualified decisions, then you're not doing your job. It's that simple.
Thank you. No other public comment on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I would move the res, the approval of resolution R-79-25.
Second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-80-25.
A resolution fixing the time and place for a public hearing on the proposed city tax budget for Miami County for the calendar year 2026 and draft appropriation ordinance.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. So at the last commission, commission meeting, you passed a resolution to set the budget hearing for tonight. This resolution asks that you rescind that resolution and set that hearing for the 15th of July. We did not get the public notice out in the newspaper in time, and that has to be out there for 10 days. So we are asking that you set the, move the hearing to the 15th, and we'll get that notice out there in the newspaper.
For July 15th?
Correct.
Any comments from commissioners? Uh, Selene?
So late, Larksen, need to do proper. So basically, here we go again. They can't even get a simple notice in the newspaper in time, and this is acceptable to you guys?
It's not, that's why we're changing it, that's why we're moving the schedule, because it wasn't acceptable.
Right, but you know what's going to happen? Do you know what the next steps are? That's where they're going to be passing the resolution later to actually impact property tax rates, is that not correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so that, that deadline is going to be moved into emergency mode. Ooh, got an emergency. So, so we make a mistake back here so that we can then have an emergency leader. So we have to push it through because, well, you know, we didn't get the notice in. It's really hard at this point to start to see these guys as actual, real, dedicated people. Everything should be on a schedule that says, "We've got to get that done, somebody has to be responsible for that." And I would ask you guys to use your subpoena powers and say, "Who is responsible for these mistakes that aren't getting fixed before you guys have to look at it?" The fact that you guys are tolerating less than mediocrity, wow, that's a wow. That is such a wow. I would have been fired 10 times over in my job if I acted like these guys on a regular basis. Every single meeting, there's a few that haven't had specific errors. This is very important, this isn't a game. The people's tax rates go up based on every choice and decision you guys make. You would think, when you get your property tax bill for your home, it would matter to you that it's going up, and the choices that are being made down here, right here, are causing that. The budget that they're about to pass, that they want to put before you, that are going to increase that, how can you seriously sit here and bet your preoccupies you're not even listening, so that's great? So, you know, when people aren't listening to the citizens and they've got something better to do with their time, step down, don't be here, go away. Let someone who wants to care about the law of this community, and that when the public officials break the law, they have to be dealt with. And if you're not going to deal with them, then you step down, because if you're a coward and you can't enforce the law, get out of here. We don't need you.
You are.
Yes, I am. I'm welcome to do so. I'm also welcome to be a citizen that points out when the law is not being followed.
You can do both.
That's right, I can.
Thank you.
And again, I'm going to ask Jesus to touch your hearts, your minds and your spirits to remind you what true caring is, because I'm not sure you know. I'm not sure you know. And that's sad to me. If you let public officials get away with not caring about the constituency, you are complicit with whatever they're doing wrong. The fact that the legal counsel that sits in here that represents the city, you guys rely on that legal counsel, that's a conflict of interest. Just that is broken, it's broken, it's broken, it's broken. That's like saying, you're the defendant, and you want the prosecutor's prosecuting attorney to give you advice. Give me a break. You guys wouldn't do that if you were on the line, but here, you do it every week, every meeting. Really give some serious thought to the things that are broken, it's time to change them. They're broken, they need to be fixed.
Commissioners, I'd like to respond.
Go right ahead, sir.
So, this will not affect the tax rates at all. The deadline for passing the tax budget is the 15th of July, so we will bring that for the commission. We'll have that under consideration, pass it, and we will submit it before the 20th, the July 20th, which is the deadline, to the Miami County Attorney. So, it has no effect on the tax rates whatsoever.
Okay.
And it meets all the legal requirements of bringing and proceeding the tax budget and getting it passed and fulfilling those requirements so the Budget Commission, the County Budget Commission can set our rates.
Is the passage of the budget or the, the outcome of the hearing going to result in an emergency ordinance because of the schedule change?
It will not. So what will happen is at the next meeting, the resolution to present the tax budget, we will request that you pass that as an emergency, which resolutions only require one reading anyhow, so we're not asking you to waive any readings. But what it does is waive the 10-day period after that for that to take effect so that we can submit to the Budget Commission of the county by 15th of July.
Please don't yell out from the crowd, please, thank you. All right, Valerie, does this apply to you at all?
Not at this time.
Thank you, dear. Uh, Kim Heisler? Thank you. Commissioners, I'll accept the motion then.
I would like to move that we would pass or approve resolution R-80-25.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is ordinance number O-9-25.
An emergency ordinance impacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Pickwa.
This is just a resolution that updates the...
It's an ordinance, actually.
I'm sorry, it's an ordinance that updates the illegal and law changes within the ordinances and components. It's an annual update, my understanding is that it hasn't been done in the last couple of years, so it's an emergency for the commission tonight to make sure that everything's up to date.
Problem is, is that none of the ordinances that were updated was included in this. So I don't know what's, what's being updated.
I would have to check, I want you to know.
Yeah, then it's, it's going to have to hold, it's a first reading anyways at this point, so...
Mayor, I would move that we table it on second?
Move that we will table the item...
I told you, I believe you have specified a time in the...
Till next meeting.
Yeah, so I'll table till next meeting.
Motion to table ordinance number O-9-25 to next meeting. I need a, moved and seconded, I need a roll call.
Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Holman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Ordinance number O-9-25 has been tabled. We'll move on to ordinance number O-10-25, a first reading.
An ordinance to amend Title 15 Land Usage Pickwa Development Code.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Uh, this, I'm going to go somewhat quickly, but if you would like me to stop or slow down, please let me know. It is a little bit unwieldy, if you will. The request before you this evening is a modification to our development code. It basically creates a new category of zoning district that would be available to any business owner or user within the city of Pickwa. It would create what is called a planned development district. These are very common, we are actually one of the few cities in the area that does not have. This is an option for development to occur. So this could be used for anyone that has existing property or anyone that would like to develop in the future. It is an option available to someone, it is not required of anyone, and would not be obligated upon anyone. Again, it just provides an option to someone as all the other zoning districts that we have provide. So I will note before I get into some of the details of this, the planning commission did meet in their regular session on June 10th, and they did recommend approval of this to you in a four to zero vote. So with that, there are two notes, there are two portions that I'd like to discuss about the changes to our development code. So the first piece is that planned development piece, which I'll walk through. And then the second piece is a modification to our fence standards. So I will touch on that at the end after I go through this planned development component. So a planned development district does a couple of things, as I noted. It allows for the creation of a zoning district that allows more flexibility. So when we have properties that have mixes of uses, so to give you an example, you imagine like at the Walmart or the Kroger Shopping Center, you will see where there is a large retail or commercial user, and then sometimes there's outlots that exist on that, or sometimes they're on the same parcel. That becomes very challenging in our code. So when you can imagine that one of those properties wants to build an outbuilding, or they want to build a new structure, it becomes a challenge under our code sometimes to allow the setbacks or the landscaping or the different standards that are within our code. And what you would see then is that that applicant would go in front of our Board of Zoning Appeals, and they would ask for a number of variances to our code to allow them to achieve the development they are trying to achieve. Generally, when you see a lot of variances in your code, it tells you that there is an option that is lacking in your code, or there's a standard that is unreasonable for the development community or the residential community to follow, because they're asking to vary it from it. And if you see it consistently, again, our goal is to review and analyze our code and try to make it better for the residents in the, the future development community, whether that's commercial or otherwise. So what you'll see in Exhibit A is the creation of that planned development. Again, there are two general standards, there's PDR, which is Planned Residential, and PDMD, which is Planned Mixed Use District. So those two districts live under this section. And what you will see fundamentally, the majority of this section do, is create the process for approval. So I will go through some of it, I will not go through all of it unless you would like me to. It touches on the application process and how a person would apply to allow this to happen. Generally, it is similar to other zoning map amendments that we have within our code. It would then require specific findings of fact by our planning commission. So we would not just allow someone to go into this district without having to meet our five findings of fact. And generally, those findings of fact require a higher level of review than we would in a general zoning district. So in a general zoning district, those zoning standards are kind of the benchmark that we have. In this district, we will be creating those benchmarks. So upfront, we have to make sure that we have a lot more information about what the development looks like, what the property is doing, and what we are agreeable to in terms of those variances, setbacks, landscaping, lighting, all of those different components. This then goes through the submission of the application, and it touches on what they are required to provide in terms of materials. It goes through all of the requirements that must be met to be allowed to make that application. It then goes through the process when it sees the planning commission, which the planning commission would be the first body to review. They would then make a recommendation to the city commission, and it touches on the process for the city commission to authorize that zoning map amendment, which would allow them into the zoning district. And then it also goes through the options that are available, which are really twofold, which is to allow them to do a preliminary development plan, which would be, an example would be, you would lay out your future uses and say, "I want this use here and that use there." They would provide a map, and they would say, "Generally, we're looking to do this on the property." And then they would wait. They would then have to get approval for that preliminary plan, and they would come back before the planning commission and back before the city commission on individual portions of that site. So as you can imagine, if there was a site that they laid out with five buildings, they would have to come back for each building to get final approval for each component. And again, they may say, "Well, I want to do three buildings at once," and they would bring three buildings forward to you. But the preliminary plan lays out the general approval, and then they would come back and get final approval. That would be the process for the first option. The second option would be just the final development plan overall, where they would say, "I have five buildings, I know exactly where they are, I know exactly what I want, this is what I want to do," which is very similar to what we have in other processes in the city so far. But that process would allow them to agree to the development standards, show you exactly what they're intending to do, and then you would approve it. So that is what I would argue to be the short, or the quicker process or the longer process. So if somebody is intending to develop a property over 15 years, they very likely would put a preliminary plan in place and slowly develop buildings over time. Or if they knew what they wanted to do and they were interested to do it now, they would provide the final development plan, give us exactly what they're going to do for those five buildings, and they would get approval as they go. So those are the two major processes that would come before the planning commission and the city commission. This also lays out very clearly what actions are permitted by staff. So I note that because it's important that there are abilities to do what we call minor modifications to a plan. We define that very clearly. We don't intend to have staff making approvals that are not made by the city commission or the planning commission. But what we do want to have happen is if, let's say, an example would be we approve a fence in a plan, and we find out there's rock there, and they can't put that fence, and it needs to move four feet, it gives staff the ability, under very clear standards, the ability to move that fence to four feet and not have to go back in front of the planning commission and the city commission to move a fence four feet. Now, if somebody said, "Well, I want to now do a building that's different," that would not be allowed by staff to be approved. It would go back before the planning commission, go back before city commission. These standards are very clear in the minor modification language, and it explicitly calls out what is and is not permitted to be moved or changed by staff. And again, the goal of that is to allow staff to modify minor things that don't impact the overall concept or goals of the development, only the actual placement and small things that can happen as you get to the point where you're actually building the project.
What if the property owner disagrees with the staff's minor change?
Well, so the minor modification would be requested of us. So they would make an application to staff, just similar to like a zoning permit, and they would say, "Well, we would like them to do this modification."
And then you can make it.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Then you can make the change without having to go back before.
It would basically be like a zoning permit, where then we're not going in front of planning commission and city commission, but we would authorize that. but we would authorize that. Now, from a staff's perspective, what I would tell you is, staff also has the right to say, "We don't believe what you're requesting is a minor modification. We believe that's a major modification, and you're obligated to go in front of the planning commission and the city commission."
Is there a cost to the citizen for you to do the modification?
So there would not be a cost to a citizen, there would be a cost to an applicant. So, in the case that a development was going forward, the developer would be obligated to pay the cost of their application, and if they were to make a modification in any way, they would be obligated to pay for that modification to have, uh, the board hearing and the other items, uh, be reviewed.
Is this, is this new minor modification process, is this only applying to the new?
Yes. Only for the planned developments, as of which we have zero currently.
Got you. So it's always gonna be a developer that's doing it?
It will always be someone under this process, this is not for anything that is existing today.
Okay, good.
And again, I wanna make clear, there's no obligation of anyone to enter into this. If they make the determination to enter into this, they are determining they want this process. And that is why this process is multiple pages, is extremely specific, because if we, if they go through this, we want them to understand there's an expectation, an additional expectation upon them.
Were, you, you had mentioned that Pickwad's kinda like behind some of our nearby neighbors with a process like this. Is there a particular city or cities that you reviewed to kinda create this process, or as a, as an example?
Uh, I mean, you certainly can look at almost any community around here, I can only tell you from my experience. Um, generally, people, uh, have a lot more planned development districts, so they would have them very specific to individual categories. Uh, so if you go around, uh, different communities have like planned industrial, planned commercial, planned residential, planned, they have all the categories. Um, we felt, as we reviewed all of those, that in Pickwad, it really, it, it seems like it's less likely in those lots of categories, and we really felt that two categories, the planned residential and the planned mixed use, uh, are likely going to be the categories that would provide an option available to developers uh, in our community to allow them to potentially go through that process. Uh, we didn't see there was value in the other planned developments that many other communities have, Sydney, Troy, um, Baydale. You pick, you pick a community roughly our size in the area, uh, they probably have three or five.
Yeah, and as you, as you mentioned, the, the code deficiencies make themselves known by the variances that are applied for.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, other than that, uh, again, it goes through then each individual district, uh, which lays out the general standards and uses for each district, uh, of which can be modified as part of that process, but it lays out a general, uh, set of standards, uh, that would be a place to start. Uh, and then they would be allowed to be modified through that process. Uh, that includes, uh, development standards for the site planning, parking and loading, lighting, landscaping, and other similar, uh, development standards. Um, that is the functional section to 2.10, which is what creates that. Then you will also see within your packet, there are changes to Section 3.2, which is the preliminary, or the primary use table, which authorizes those zoning districts to exist. You will then also see changes to 3.7, which is the accessory use table, which authorizes the two districts that we are talking about to exist within the accessory uses. Then you will see a change to 7.1.1, which is a summary of the review authority table, which adds the legislative authority, uh, excuse me, legislative review by the planning commission and the legislative authority of decision by the city commission for these. Uh, it also, uh, modifies and reflects our web and mailing notifications. As we're all aware, we have updated our notifications to 400 feet, uh, as well as 14 days prior. Uh, so it updates the standards in there to match what we have changed, uh, in other locations. And then 7.1.4, uh, updates again the planned, uh, developments as a review by the planning commission. And 7.1.5, updates that the city commission is the decision-making body on planned developments. That is the planned development text. Uh, I will note, this is a first reading, uh, so we intend to bring this back before you, uh, two more times. Um, based on the schedule that we have today, uh, we believe the second reading would be July 15th, and we believe the third reading would be August 19th. If there are questions I can answer about the planned development, but I also would like to note the changes or the proposed changes to Section 4.3, the landscaping transition and screen. Are there no, no comments on planned development tonight? Does everybody wait?
Yeah, there's a lot of them, yeah, we got it.
Okay, alright, uh, so then the last change or the last proposed change modification to our code is in Section 4.3.8, which is our walls and fencing section. If you go to C, we have standards, and under C, we have design and installation, which obligates or restricts the material and color of our fences in the city. Uh, so, the modifications that are proposed are twofold. The first is that it does not permit, uh, fences to be constructed of chicken wire. Uh, so that would be in residential locations, uh, they would have to be additional materials or other materials. Uh, that is being added to junk tires and other discarded materials as being non-permissible, uh, materials for a fence. And then the last piece is a modification to Section 4, uh, which is the chain link fence section. Uh, so it would not permit chain link fences in the front yard of residential districts. It would permit them in the side and rear yard, uh, and it would not permit, uh, the chain link fences to be, uh, bare metal. They would be obligated to be vinyl coated.
Would current chain link fences be grandfathered in?
Yes, so, I will note, the, the vinyl coated are only in commercial districts. Residential districts are not obligated to vinyl coat them. Uh, but so, the side yard and rear yard, they would still be allowed to be non-coated in residential districts.
Why are we, where did this change come from?
The, which, which, the chicken wire or the?
No, I understand the chicken wire, based off of your explanation, I assume that there are some fences in town that have, um, are the wooden split rail that then have, uh, the chicken wire that, that goes across the back of it to keep their pets inside the fence, but you still receive the aesthetic look of the split rail. Based off of your explanation, that would still be allowed under this change?
Correct, you could not use chicken wire as the primary material of your fence, so you could not apply for a fence with chicken wire.
But it could be a part of it. And then, um, this says, "Are not permitted in the front and side yards as far as chain link fences." I mean, I got a problem with this, it, 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 just on merit anyway, of us telling people what type of, of fence they can have. There are several, uh, homes, um, throughout the city who have chain link fences. Some of them have chain link fences in the front yard because it's the only place they have to let their, their dogs out. But, why, I, I, I mean, why are we, where did this change come from? Did somebody request this?
Sure, yeah, so, we basically, we get complaints. Uh, the creative services department also has our code enforcement division. Um, and so, as I'm sure many of you are aware, we get complaints daily, uh, multiple complaints daily. Uh, and so, chain link fence are one of the largest complaints that we receive, uh, whether that's the condition of the chain link fence or, um, in properties that are not maintain, uh, the safety of the chain link fence. And so, again, a lot of that is if it's not in the front yard, it doesn't impact, uh, kids walking by, it doesn't impact a lot of that. Uh, but, if it's in the rear yard, uh, again, there's no questions on that. So this was a, uh, direct response to trying to fix some of the complaints that we receive about the quality of fencing, uh, and chain link fence, for better or worse, uh, does, uh, deteriorate faster than a wood fence or a vinyl fence or any of the other types of fence. But that is, that is what it is, it is not intended to do anything beyond, uh, manage the, uh, or mitigate some of the complaints we received.
So, is it allowed in side yards or, or not?
I, I don't believe the intent was to not allow it in side yards, but now that we read this, it, it, it likely, it likely does not permit it in side yard based on this language. Uh, if that's something that you feel it should be permitted, we can certainly modify, uh, the language as you see fit.
Well, I've had, like, you said it doesn't last long, but I've had my chain link fence for 31 years, certainly. At my house, and I had no problem with it. Looks good, it's up to style.
I would, I would ask that you allow it in side yards. My neighbor has, uh, to the south of me, has a, um, side fence that, that goes, uh, from the side of his yard to the side of his house. And, I've thought for years that if I could get the, the enough money to do it, that I would like to be able to put one there and also cross the other way. And that way, I can lead my dogs.
And I, I, I certainly understand the concern about the cost of what, uh, vinyl fence or a wood fence are. If that is something that is concerning, again, we're looking at it particularly from the code enforcement and, uh, safety aspect. If there, we generally don't look at things from a, a cost perspective, that's not what, what we're, you know, what we look at. Uh, so, if you're concerned about that, and this is something that is not interesting.
I think the people who deserve to pay for it are concerned about that.
Yeah, understood. And again, our, our goal is to provide to you that option. If it's something you're uncomfortable with or you don't believe it is appropriate, uh, this is just what we are proposing, if there's better ways to do that. This would be the first reading as well.
First reading.
So we'd be more than happy to modify any language that you feel appropriate, uh, for this, for this language.
Did, did you not state that existing chain link fences would be grandfathered in?
That is correct, there's, uh, we, we don't call it grandfathered, we call it pre-existing, not conforming use.
How then does that solve the issues with existing fences that are deteriorating?
It solves the issue when the fence is obligated to be removed, it cannot be replaced. So in the scenario where somebody's fence is falling in on itself and it's a danger, uh, it would be obligated to be removed as part of our nuisance process, and then it would not be allowed to be replaced in, in that sense. So you'd be allowed to replace it, but you'd be obligated to replace it with a material, uh, that was in better condition.
Ma, Mayor, I will, will, um, if it is appropriate to wait until the second reading, but I am fully prepared at this moment to offer an amendment to strike the section regarding chain link fences not permitted in front and side yards.
Yeah.
Please move forward.
I'll take a nap.
Mayor, I would move to amend ordinance dash O-10-25 to strike the language that states, um, so after the word fence material, it would be period, and, "And that chain link fences are not permitted in the front and side yards of residential properties be stricken from this ordinance."
Second, moved and seconded. Let me have a roll call on that.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Holman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Alright, so, when we see this next, at the next meeting, that change will be made?
It will be reflected, correct.
We've got some public comment, does anybody else up here wanna talk on this? Select?
So, I noticed Paul just left, that was nice. Okay, so, um, maybe we should wait for my seven minutes until he returns, 'cause, I don't know, he's not listening.
Can you guys talk on this, please?
So, I am.
Thank you.
So, this whole thing, what I need to know is, have you guys taken constitutional training?
There's, there's a lot of constitutional training, I'm not certain what, is there a class you're specifically referring to? Or, what do you mean by constitutional training?
Well, the Fourth Amendment is pretty clear, that the people have a right to enjoy their property. And I've watched several zoning ordinances and other things, this one is another one, that is trying to restrict people's enjoyment of their own property. That, to me, is a constitutional violation, and it takes priority over the city charter. So, when you look at the United States Constitution, you have to be really clear that you understand what it says, how it impacts, what codes you're enforcing. The reason we had to get rid of the flag ordinance earlier this year, last year, was because you guys were trying to implement flags restricting the number of flags residents could have on their property, whether they looked bad or not, you didn't care. So, the point was, that had to be stricken because it was against Fourth Amendment rights. So when you look at commercial, you guys can have at it, have fun, go for it. But what is happening is, you're paying more attention to pleasing businesses and disparaging your citizens, that is not okay. So, when you have Fourth Amendment protection, you actually have protection from your own city officials taking a power grab, that they're able to stop you from enjoying your property. And if that means that your property, you don't have enough money to fix it, guess what? You have to go gather people to help people fix it. You don't get to start having code ordinances and calling it a nuisance and taking away their constitutional rights. And when that starts happening at the township level, that is improper, illegal, and wrong. And at some point, the people's peace will be so disturbed, as Mr. Holman's improper, uh, couple meetings ago, uh, putting it on the public record of what he thinks disturbance of peace is. Disturbance of peace is when the government violates the people's rights and makes them mad. He's saying, "Oh, well, if they get mad and they come after us, that's their problem." No, 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 never, the people's problem, always the government's problem. So, when the government overreaches, when the government starts being tyrannical, when the government starts infringing on property rights, that is not okay. Same thing with the chicken ordinance, all that stuff, it's all illegal. So, when you get the people mad enough, they will file a lawsuit, they will band together, they will donate accordingly, and they will win. This is not okay, you need to start paying attention, just because you came from Covington to here and they didn't like you either, you need to start realizing that.
I, I, I just wanna say to you, look, I, I don't, I don't know you, I, I don't know that I, any of that is appropriate to me, right? I, what I would say to you is, again, I-
If you're recommending, it's my time, if you're recommending ordinances and you're recommending to these fine people up here
Absolutely.
that they do the right thing, then you need to have constitutional training to make sure you're not overreaching your recommendation. Because your recommendation needs to be within the law.
No, and I appreciate that.
And the Constitution is the law.
What I wanna say to you though is, I appreciate your comment, and again, we go through our law director, we go through all of that. Our code is, is a working document, it's a living document, as you heard this evening.
And the reason I'm coming up here now is because you're making changes, and so I'm giving you the opportunity-
We're recommending changes, correct.
Please don't talk over me, to incorporate the ultimate changes which revalidate the Constitution and eliminating from your code, the Pickwad City Ordinance Code, all violations against the people's rights of the United States Constitution. And, in doing so, it's gonna take you a little bit longer than what you've presented here tonight.
I'm gonna ask you not to make a personal attack against any staff member, any, any, any member of the staff here, please. Alright, you're making, well, you can make your comment. Nope, you've got time, but no personal attacks, okay?
Yep.
You can go, keep going.
And so, when you're asking to revise ordinances, it takes an ungobly number of people that have to get together to propose an ordinance. And that's where these guys, I'm gonna ask them to change that, that 1,250 is too many. That's way too many people to have to get an amendment passed to actually take our rights back. Okay, I'm asking, I'm actually gonna ask that you put a lawyer on staff that takes care of our rights, not the city.
Your ti, your time's up.
That would have you guys follow the Constitution.
You're, do the charter amendment or charter change, which you can vote on, you can change that, we've done it once, it was 2,000. You said 1,250 is too much?
Yeah.
It was 2,000, and they made a charter change, a charter amendment change that citizens voted on, changed to 1,250.
Right, there's only 8,800 taxpaying families, it's way too high, it's 25% of the population, that's way too high. From a numerical standpoint and a statistical standpoint, it makes no sense whatsoever, it needs to be changed.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to note, uh, again, from a staff perspective, we bring, uh, we have a process. We go through our planning commission, uh, we bring it to the city commission, it changes, it's a living document, it's intended to, to have that. It's intended to have a public comment portion, it's intended to continually evolve. And again, from the staff's perspective, we are not bringing this here to tell you that you have to do it. We are telling you that this is a recommendation based on a lot of different factors, and sometimes those factors do not incorporate all the comments or all the concerns that the city commission receives. And therefore, the city commission has the authority to modify it even further. So I just note that because, again, our intention is not to bring forward illegal or non-constitutional amendments to our standards. We go in front of our legal commission, or our legal council, we assure that it meets state law, uh, in, in all ways. Yeah, alright, I appreciate it.
Now, you signed up for this, but how does it relate to your business?
It actually does.
Go ahead.
So, I had a veteran recently, sorry, Valerie Mulligan, Operation Veteran, caregiver support, Pickwad. Um, I had a veteran recently come to me with a question regarding, um, some special fencing for his property because he was told that he could not erect a six-foot chain link fence to the backside of his property that went against a field in the Candlewood neighborhood, is that accurate?
I, you have to give me that.
Are you, are you not allowed to have, he said he was only allowed to have a four-foot, he could not have a six-foot fence? Unless it was wood, or it was wrought iron, or it was, um, that plastic stuff?
It sounds to me like you're talking about HOA standards, which would not be regulated by the city, but, um, I, I don't think that's-
This is actually in Candlewood, and Candlewood is not an HOA, the, depending what the behind Candlewood is- behind Candlewood is an HOA. The resident was wanting to put in that chain link fence to keep his dogs in the property. And so he came to me and asked what options we had available to help him with getting fencing, because chain link was going to be his cheapest option, and the other options were outside of his, um, capacity to afford, because he's a disabled veteran living on a fixed income. And so, um, it's just interesting that this happened to come forward tonight and that I could bring this up without having to go to your office privately.
Did I try and contact Aaron or anyone?
I just learned about this on Friday, so this is Tuesday, sorry.
No problem.
And we have a gala coming up, so I'm like a little bit on the busy side.
You're busy.
Um, but I, I...
If you want to call off in our office, we'd be happy, I, I can address that.
I understand that. I, I will say, um, we have a lot of homes in Pickwa that don't have side yards and backyards, and front yard is the only place their little children have a place to go and play, and putting a fence up is oftentimes necessary. Again, chain link is long-term fence. You heard Chris Lee say, three, what, 31 years? 31 years? I mean, thank you, Mr. DeBros, for saying we need to strike this, I appreciate that, because I do believe that, um, as Soleil said, this is a government overreach, so I would encourage you to be a little more lenient and understand that people are just trying to live their lives, and if somebody wants to erect a six-foot chain link fence to keep their Rottweiler in the backyard from jumping the fence and going after the poodle behind them, let's, let them have that, it's not, I'm sorry, it's in the backyard, it's against a field, it's not even in a place that it's going to affect anybody. And it, and it's, it's just wrong. We need to, we need to come back to the table with some common sense.
Thank you.
What a evening, huh? Common sense, I like that, wow, that was really good, we need lots of that. I do kind of want to reiterate what Soleil had mentioned, uh, just a few short minutes ago was that, two, two things. You had made Chris a, a direct comment to her about, you know, please don't personally attack. I get that, that's not right, it should never, ever be done, yet you guys sit up there and be very disrespectful for us, and very direct, it's at us, it's not at these guys. You come right back at the individual sitting here as if we're a child, um, and I'm asking you guys not to attack us if we're speaking our voice. And you've got to understand what I'm talking about, because it happens a lot, and it has actually happened, um, tonight in this meeting multiple times. And I also agree too, that if there's any changes made, um, it should be considerably less, uh, because if we only have 8,800 paid taxpayers and we want to make change, it needs to be much smaller, and the only people that can make legislative change is you guys to change that number.
It's just not true.
I don't know what part is not true, but...
That it takes a charter change to change that 1,250 number you're talking about.
You guys, you can't speak up and you guys vote on it? So that we don't have to come together and discuss?
Citizens have to vote on that. So we give you the power that you're, you're, you're saying you're talking about, giving you the power to do that.
Or, or you can bring it up and get everybody on board.
We create a charter review committee, that committee is comprised of people from each of our boards, from citizens, and then they can bring that up, you can take it to them, you can go to those committee meetings and say, hey, put this on the agenda, put this, change it from 1,250 to 500, whatever you want. You can do that.
So we, as the people, still have to come up with that, and you can't, you can't say, hey, guys, let's get together and just do this for the people.
You can do it as well.
I can do it as well, but I'm saying you can't...
It's more, it's more effective if it comes from you, though.
No, it's more effective and efficient if it comes from one person and only includes five instead of...
It's the charter review committee that does that.
Everybody on board. Okay, so, back to the real issue here. So the mixed use that's taking place, and I think I brought this up in planning, I still want to...
Sure.
Try to make sense of it. What was, what was the reason that we're doing this now? And wait until I get done asking. And then, does this plan to mixed use allow then for, say, you mentioned Walmart and the outlots and stuff, does it allow for short or long-term, like, housing or overnight stays, non-traditional happening in a parking lot when they're with other businesses around as long as, um, whoever owns that area, owns that? Like, I guess that's, that wasn't a very good question, but, okay, so, it's been a year ago, I heard some talking about, like, the Pickwa, the Pickwa out there where the new mall is, I forget what it's called.
Pickwa Center.
Pickwa Center, yes, that they were going to erect some kind of, I don't know if it was temporary or permanent, like, housing pods or something like that in the parking lot. And my question is, would this mixed use, would, say, they be able to come since they own that land and say, hey, we want mixed use, we want to have these pods here, we're going to have this business here as we have it, and maybe incorporate some other stuff? Is that...
Absolutely, they could do that, correct.
Okay, so, if something like that happened, they would still have to come in front of the commission, the commission would say, you know, I don't think we like that pile idea.
Right. So, so I, I could even go back further if you'd like me to, and I can explain, kind of go through that process of how it would work if you'd like.
Okay, but then the other question is, making it, allowing it to be mixed use, does that open up the city of Pickwa and allowing them to go mixed use, and we saying, no, we don't want that, does that open us up for lawsuits?
No. So the, the great part about the plan development is that it's unique to each development. So it does not provide precedence, it does not provide other areas the same rights, it provides specific rights to that lot owner.
Okay.
Your time's up, but thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Good question. All right, no more public comment cards. It is a first reading, and we'll end that. So next on our agenda are the city managers' report.
I don't have anything to say, thank you.
Okay. Then next is Commissioner's comments, and we will start with Commissioner Simmons.
Before I get started, I got a quick question for you. The charter review committee, or is that something that we have on a timed basis?
Well, I think it's not every 10 years, is that correct? We just did it two years ago, you can bring it up at any time.
Yeah, it, as much as we're hearing from folks, it might be time to do that. Anyway, I'll start with the light and go to the heavy stuff. So first of all, for the light stuff, usually we're here the week after my church does a food distribution weekend. This week, we're here, they have their food distribution this coming Saturday. So if you are in need and you need some food, you go to 105 East Green Street, Stonebridge Community Church, get there early, we get people lining up on the street about 8:00 AM, and you get a box of food. Anyway, uh, next item, I owe an apology to the police chief, Chief Byron, because he and I talked this last week, and he thought that my commissioner comments I made at the last meeting pertained to a lack of trust in our police department, and absolutely nothing could be further from the truth. I, I really appreciate our police department more than a lot of folks would understand, because I was a police officer for two and a half years, I would not have that job again for a lot of money, I just can't do it, well, especially being all busted up in my hands. Anyway, so the, the last item is, I, we did have a commission, executive session, and I asked the guys back there to consider having the city managers' employment terminated. And I'm going to make that motion in a moment. There are a number of reasons. There's the lawsuit last fall that we lost, and the fact that our insurance has gone up on account of losing that lawsuit. There is, I believe it to be mishandling of the rumpie situation. There is the whole, he got sworn in, he didn't get sworn in, he did get sworn in, that has gone on where, um, I actually have an email that, that the city manager says, I didn't know I needed to get that done, and I went ahead and had myself sworn in, and it alludes to the one on the fourth, and yet it's, no, he, he got sworn in earlier, we don't have any proof of it, but, anyway, there's the video that I brought up last week. And there's a matter of the lack of response when asked a question last week. So, and we've been getting emails from citizens that they have other reasons. So I'm going to raise a motion to the rest of the commission to have the city managers' position with the city brought to an end.
Motion's been raised, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Guess we don't get any public comment on that then, huh? That's all I have.
Commissioner Holman.
I have no comments, I'd like to get out and enjoy what's left of this warm summer night. It's going to be in the 90s this weekend, so, great.
Commissioner DeBros.
I yield back.
Commissioner Vetter?
A couple comments, can, uh, where are we with the spay and neuter program that we've authorized for the city? Are we, do we have a vendor yet?
We're actually, we have a contract that's currently in place with the May Society of Dayton, yeah, and then we're working on getting two of our organizations and some more volunteers.
I had a person contact me from an area that I would call not where we have targeted in the past, a different area, and I wanted to get back to that person and let them know where we are with, with that process. I will do that. Second thing, for those people who maybe are not aware, farmer's market started...
Talk on your mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. The farmer's market has started on Thursday night at downtown, and I think we're starting to see some spring, uh, spring, uh, vegetables and things come in, so if you're interested in farmer's market, good opportunity to do that. I'm in favor of getting kind of a quarterly update on the community services report, I, I really like that report, I think it shows activity of that department, and I think it's been real helpful to, to see where we are with that, so if we can start to get that, I would appreciate that. Finally, Jerry, I, I see on the, on the commission schedule that we'll be receiving a quarterly financial update from you probably in July 15th, and it would cover, I assume, the January 1 of '25 through, uh, through April 30th of '25?
Yeah, and by that time we may have May, sorry, yeah, correct, and by that time we may have May as well, was that, uh, it'll be brought up, be as current as we can make it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Again, that's something I've advocated for and has found it very helpful, as I understand the city finances, and so I look forward to that, to that report. The last thing was, I'm a little confused about when our next city commission will be, we had option one and option two, and I don't know, have, have we decided on what we're going to go with?
Yeah, so the commission settled on July 15th is our next regular meeting.
He's thought about the next several meetings that we were supposed to...
Yeah, the, the, the special meetings are being considered right now, and we'll have them scheduled out probably next week for you.
Okay.
Early, early next week, you think?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Plan ahead.
I yield back.
All right. Mr. City Manager, is there a way we can get the agenda out, at least a day ahead of time? I mean, we've talked about this and talked about this, and I wasn't aware that, the citizens didn't see it, but we got one, and then it, like I said, it was revised several times. I understand why you don't put it out right away because of the revisions, but is there a way to do that?
Um, yes, potentially, we're going to run into the same issue that we had the last time that we tried to do this, and I'm, I'm happy to do whatever the commission sees fit. If you want it put out with revisions, I can work with the clerk to do that and have the revisions numerated some way, if that's what you prefer, whatever you prefer to your meeting, and so I'm happy to oblige.
What do you guys?
Mayor, I do remember a time prior when the, the iterations were published, and there was significant issue with people grabbing the wrong version coming up.
Bring it up, yeah.
Yeah. I believe I even grabbed the wrong one, one time on an issue that pertained to me, back when I was on the other side of the dais. It's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult question. I, I feel like probably it would be great if we could go back to doing the revision process and put it out as early as possible, but the citizens kind of have it both ways, where we don't do revisions, but also they have the most latest and greatest at every moment, so it's probably going to have to be some give and take on, on how that works.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
So some of the items that, that delay the published, publishing of the pack, it have to do with things out of our control, typically they have to do with development agreements or items from third parties or other agencies, if we don't get back in time, it could be grant application notifications, things, things of that nature. And I, I can submit that if you would prefer, we could publish what we have minus those items until the day of the commission meeting, and then publish whatever is remaining.
I have no problem with that, and I can't be held responsible for the conspiracy theories that'll be generated, because that's not included until the date, until you get the information, so, and there will be some, I'm sure.
And I just will reiterate that there was a lot of people that were upset back years ago when there was versions posted, certainly grabbed the wrong one. I would encourage anybody coming up for public comment to maybe state a, a direction of one way or the other, whichever you prefer, and, and why.
Yeah, certainly, I'll work with the commission, and whatever you prefer, we'll go ahead and do.
I know Juneteenth is coming up Thursday, that's all I have for you, sorry. Thursday, so if you get a chance, go out, celebrate, 4th of July is coming up, we will not have a meeting, July, what was it, 2nd? July 1. We will not have a meeting, but we will have one the 15th, so that's when our next scheduled, uh, meeting is, and... Unless we have the... Special meetings, unless we have special meetings in between. And after that, I've got nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn to non-agenda public comment.
Still moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
You have five minutes?
No, we're going straight to it. You got to go?
Yeah.
Go, you got to go.
Taking one, ready?
Yeah, I'm taking one too. Frank slipped out too, we'll wait till... Yeah. Whew. How are you, Ken? Sorry, this is the last two minutes. I am.
He's mad.
How you doing? Is he?
Yeah, yeah. How are you? I'm sorry. I just want, you know, I'll see what I can do, but you can listen to what I'm saying. I'm not seeing it. I'm sorry, I'm a mayor, she was talking about the connection with Sam.
And I think that has a... Are you serious?
I'm paying attention to the world, this is right now. Well, I shouldn't say the world is a disaster. I'm on my way.
What's that? What's that? What's that? Are you serious?
I'm paying attention to the world, this is right now. Well, I shouldn't say the world is a disaster. I'm on my way.
What's that? 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 What's that?
Vince on the backside, Lieutenant Campbell?
Uh-huh.
Over to you, Campbell.
It's city property, though, because we developed it behind it, this being built. There's a field in between them, though. It is city, yeah. I mean, it is what it is, but I'm just gonna help him find the money to get the fence. I'm just gonna, I believe he's just a teenager or whatever. And he needs a bad boy, this is a high school. And she said she has to get the phone, so we didn't see it. We didn't see it. I'm gonna be here. It makes sense. Hey, I mean, are you gonna tell people that they can't put a dog tail in their backyard? Six of those dogs. Right.
It's a couple of the two of them.
Yeah, there's three with you.
Some, some.
ALA.
ALA.
So, and we live in the country.
Eight of ten.
And as this is called, we're a professional, and I have a half office. So I have a place, um, forty to the right, it's a great, I don't know, it's a good set.
See you guys.
That's stupid, we're never there. And the, we're on. Five points is a bad one to be worth. Get out of East Main today. They don't realize the ceiling that doesn't change, so you get in front of Meyer.
The, the.
It changes in front of Meyer, right in front of the gas station. I drive that all the time.
All right, Ms. Lang.
Hello, Alicia Lang, ninety-three hundred, State Route six.
Can you state your real address, please?
I don't really feel safe doing that.
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So my comment is that the battery committee came up earlier, said there was a resolution. There's a resolution, actually, that states that they're supposed to produce you a report. I didn't see anything about a PowerPoint in there, so I wanted to mention that. I was also.
We're gonna do both, is what I'm wondering.
Great, that would be great. That would be great, since that's what the resolution.
Our point's gonna be.
Enhance it. That'd be great. I love that. Little razzle-dazzle. So moving on, I was told I was gonna actually be interviewed and I was gonna get an interview letter. No, I didn't even get a letter.
Would you like to be interviewed?
I would, and I have asked at least three times to be interviewed after I was asked twice if I would be open to it.
I would like you to be interviewed.
I would love to be interviewed. Thank you. Also, I wanted to mention that it was very upsetting to sit back and hear, like, people bringing their grievances up here and to your attention. But then it feels somewhat like unless it's a fence in your own yard, you don't care or you don't strike other items. So I just ask that you listen to the people. Also, I'd like to publicly say that our district's state representative, Representative number eighty, it's a great number. Jonathan Newman is coming to hear constituents here from Pequah this coming Monday.
Johnston Farm.
At Johnston Farm, June twenty-third at 6:00 PM. Which personally I feel is a little too close to the battery burning site. I don't, I personally, you know, not recommend people go out there, but that's where it is. So if you are moved to come, please do so if that is in your heart and you feel that's best for you. I can't wait to address some concerns that I have of my own. And then conspiring is something that seems that the commission is more familiar with than the community. So claiming that there will be conspiracy theories that emerge, I feel is rude. And you just told us not to say rude things too, so I just.
That's not what I said.
Okay, okay. Thank you for correcting me. But back to what I really wanna say, please come out to Johnston Farm and speak up and tell our district's representative all of the things that are happening or have had, have happened without accountability here. If you're moved, just do so. And lastly.
What day is that? It's on the twenty-third?
It is. It's Monday, yeah, 6:00 PM. And then lastly, I don't know why I keep being denied a video that I could clearly see a police officer holding a phone up like this, recording a video on a cell phone that I was told they were conducting research for our Pequah Police Department as well as ESRG. And if that's the case, I would like to know why I'm being denied the video. I've sent emails and public records requests and maybe I just don't understand why it's not being provided.
Well, I don't think we have the video, to be honest with you.
So can, I don't understand.
You're supposed to be getting a response as to why we don't have it as well.
Okay.
At least we were, did you guys get the email from Paul that said?
Yes.
Yes, they're gonna respond to you.
Okay, so I guess it's just concerning to me because, you know, if it is research or a training exercise, it should be on hand, so.
No, it's, it's training. We don't, like, self-defense, they don't record self-defense training.
Told me it was research for the Pequah Police Department.
Okay.
Kim was with me.
All right, so we don't retain, we don't retain stuff like that. We don't, that's why we don't have it. But you will get a response to your request.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Simmons, thank you very much for being the voice of the entire community who wanted everyone else, all four of these guys, to get rid of Paul Oberdorfer, who needs to go.
Thanks for your time. Nat Susan. She's gone. And Kurt Shepherd.
Three twenty Brentwood Avenue, Kurt Shepherd.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
You said you was gonna check into something to me back in nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven?
What was that?
When I lost my house on Bull Avenue. My four children had high levels of lead. Kids are still getting lead poisoning from the damn houses. Why? I'll tell you why. Because they are not following what the damn law was sprung, for one. If the lead could not be removed from the wood, you don't power worship on the ground. It was to be removed from the house, new wood up, vinyl siding on top of it. Look it up. It's been since nineteen seventy-eight.
That's how you remit or fix it, right?
That's exactly how you fix it. You get rid of it. You don't keep it on the damn property. It's inside homes, it's outside homes. Are we above federal law in this town? My kids are due to receive that money that they were entitled to. I want them to have it. Not a joke.
I know.
Step-grandson just been tested for high levels of lead poisoning. Extremely high levels.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Valerie Malikin, Director of Operation Veteran Caregiver Support. First thing I wanted to address, Mr. Oberdorfer's no longer here and you guys have a quandary when it comes to having your agenda established online for your constituency to utilize. A good organization sets deadlines. Those deadlines, they are stuck to. Your agenda should be available twenty-four hours prior to your meeting so that your constituency can read it, all of it. If there need to be addendums to it, then those addendums go to the next meeting. Mr. Oberdorfer said that the problem was with an appropriate timeline is that some businesses and developers don't get him things until the day of the meeting. Then those businesses and those developers need to wait until the next appropriate meeting to have it addressed. Continuing to stalemate the community is not good business. The city of Pequah is struggling with transparency and honesty. You are also struggling with and you are teetering on the road of violating sunshine laws. I can't tell you that you absolutely violated anything at the moment, but I know enough about them because I run a nonprofit, that you guys are definitely on that fence. And I don't think the city can afford another lawsuit, nor do I wanna see that happen because I know that my little nonprofit that's growing could suffer from the things that are happening to the city government. So I just wanted to address that first. The next thing I wanted to address, that I already addressed briefly a little bit ago, was the handicap accessibility, not just to parking at lock nine, but handicap accessibility in the community overall. We have park issues that still haven't been addressed. We have a downtown that still hasn't addressed. I was just at a downtown business this last week and the owner of that business made it very clear to me that I needed to stay on this because her business is suffering from a lack of handicap accessible parking downtown. Now, we have no problem with emergency resolutions for software, for trash, for, what was it tonight? There was some emergency resolution we were supposed to have? For co-organizations and so forth, the changes, which by the way is something that you, I learned from you, Mary Lee, a little bit ago, is an annual thing, so it's not an emergency. Poor planning on the part of your city manager and your commission does not constitute an emergency on your citizens. And so we're more worried about spaying and neutering cats in the community than we are making sure that our handicapped citizens have safety and the accessibility that the federal law provides. There's no federal law for spay and neutering cats. And don't get me wrong, Mr. Vetter, people dump cats at my house all the time and I spend a lot of money having them spayed and neutered and finding them new homes. So I'm a hundred percent supportive of the spay and neuter program. I want you to understand that, okay? I'm not opposed to it. But we are more worried about cats in this community with our city manager than we are safe accessible parking and parks for our people who are disabled. As a commission, I'm begging you tonight to please step up the heat and get this fixed. You guys paid somebody. I'm sorry. Thanks, Chris. I appreciate that. Thank you, Frank. I appreciate that. I did notice earlier tonight, I made some notes about this. When other people were talking, I did find a few of you were looking down, you were looking at computers, you were fooling with paperwork, and you weren't giving the attention to the person standing at the podium. I have to tell you, my counterparts out here tonight called it out. And it is distressful. Please, hear us.
So I'm taking notes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing that with me.
I've got my notes here too.
It's, it's, it's distressful. It's distressful. We've got a lot of technology that gets in the way, guys. We really do.
Note-taking is technology getting in the way?
It is sometimes. We're looking at computers and playing on phones and things like that. It does get in the way. I appreciate you taking notes. Thank you. I really do appreciate that. And thank you for sharing that with me because the rest of us tonight couldn't see that. But now that you have shown that to us, we know you're taking us seriously. Thank you.
It's unfortunate that the default was not that I was being a participant and taking notes and questions that I can ask. That the assumption was I was blowing you off. So that's why I showed you, is that I'm looking down because I'm ready.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I am very concerned about the handicap accessibility. And I am really serious when I said I'd love to put Paul in a wheelchair, any one of you. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the Ohio Disabilities Department offers accessibility training. And I would highly recommend that the city of Pequah, staff and commission and any citizen here, take that class and have them come into our community and show you what it is like to have to get in and out of a handicap accessible vehicle in a parking space that is not made for that, to cross the busiest intersection in our community, to utilize the park facilities at Pittsburgh that do not have any sidewalks to it. There is one picnic shelter up there and it has no sidewalks to it, nor does it have a ramp to it. And nobody is doing anything about it. You guys, as a commission, as a city, paid for a research study on this in 2022 with recommendations and in two and a half years, not one movement forward to make this city accessible. I urge you all to go to the city of Kettering. It is the friendliest handicap accessible community I've ever been to and I love to go to Kettering for that reason. Those people take care of their people. All right, talking about taking care of our people.
Your time's up.
I was just gonna say two more things.
No, your time's up.
All right, thank you.
I would tell you that when I was a sophomore in college, I had a friend who was injured in a swimming pool accident, broke his neck, and after about twenty years, decided to come back to college. I met him every morning, I have his mother brought him to the college, and I hand lifted him with the help of a friend up three flights of stairs before we had the handicap accessibility plan. And I did that for two, almost two years.
Mayor, can I ask, my fellow commissioners and yourself, can you help me remember? I do believe I distinctly remember voting yes on a resolution, either at the last meeting or the meeting before, where I think that there was something like a hundred and twenty intersection crosswalks that were gonna be addressed, to be brought up to date, that we had to put money into that. Am I misremembering that or just some deal? Okay.
No, that was for crosswalks, that was at the corner of the crosswalk. But she also has a point when it comes to parking.
I believe there was parking in that. Was I wrong about that too? I believe that there was.
I wasn't hearing for it, but I do remember hearing about it, reading about it, so.
And I, and I thank you for keeping up the pressure because that, you know, that can't be the end of it. But I, I don't, I don't think it's fair to say that nothing's been done when specifically, literally, things have been done and that there is progress being made.
With all due respect, the only thing that's been done is the one thing that the State of Ohio required you to do, and that was the corners. That was it. And they were going to be updated. And that was state funding.
Thank you. Nicholas Demar.
Yeah, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. Yeah, I back many of Valerie's sentiments. I work in the healthcare field, so I can sympathize with, you know, developmentally disabled and those that need special needs. And I think that is a priority that we should put emphasis on. I knew that Mr. DeBros was taking notes and I just, you know, I regard him as a professional and that was my assumption, so. I do wanna speak a little bit to the, what was on the agenda tonight regarding Mr. Orbanerfer and what Mr. Simmons brought up. Typically, when it gets to the point where his tenure is and has been questioned, especially on more than one occasion, then you basically have the answer. And if everything was going well and has gone well, then there would be no reason or justification to question his employment, but his history and actions within the community have proven otherwise. This isn't Paul Simmons Orbanerfer's issue. It's a, he's speaking on the behalf of the citizens' issue, you know? It's, I wanna make that clear. It's, I don't know if the distinction is getting across there. You know, the community has in the past required into and continues to touch upon his termination from the city and, I mean, there's, we can give you like examples exemplified as a lack of professionalism during the battery burn disaster by not taking, being more proactive and has gained foresight throughout his career to call upon his own PR managerial skills, however limited they may be. He utilized the citizens' tax dollars to establish some kind of new job position within the government to basically farm out, you know, this duty, this public relations duty amongst the fractured community, which would not have been fractured, you know, had he not signed the contractual obligations to allow these entities to exist within the community and burn these batteries. So, you know, that's not right that he, he solidified these deals and negotiations. This, and this happened because of that signature. And yet he has to farm out our tax dollars to clean up that mess and hire a PR person to, to clear, clear up the mess with our tax dollars. You know, like as if this, this tragedy was somehow our fault, the citizens' fault. Our tax dollars are going to repair it, especially with the Battery Burn Committee and the cost of a lawyer. And I mean, we paid for the whole thing all along the way, is the, is the, it's the hoodwink of the whole thing, you know? You know, he, he showed a lack of professionalism and integrity through compromising, I would say, the sanctity of the members of the commission and the commission body as a whole by not respectfully replying to a valid and genuine question by Commissioner Simmons, by rebutting in a mocking tone and fashion. And these actions are leaving the perception of the unity of the commission in question amongst the public eye and casting a bad light on the valid operations within our local government. He continues to perpetuate a rift in our community by showing a lack of concern, interest, or involvement in what the citizens' voice in chambers during open public comment. By simply not being present, he is symbolically showing a lack of investment in the heart of the citizens' voices and a lack of true solidarity and true disrespect for the honor, pride, and heritage within the community. You know, and that's the sad thing. He's not invested. He's, right now, he's not invested. He's absent. How can you say that somebody is absent from this part of the meeting? Granted, it's not, you know, part of the, I mean, it's been adjusted to be not part of the formal meeting, but it's a formality, a technicality, but he should still be here, right? To hear the citizens' voices and at least symbolically to show that he's invested in this community and is with us, all of us, you know? Aren't we proud of our Pickwa community? I know you are. Mayor, Mayor is very proud of his community, right? I mean, you're so invested in this community. Police officer, you're, you work with the police department right now, currently. You're two-time mayor. I mean, it just goes beyond words how invested you are throughout your whole life in, in this community. And we can't stand for, we cannot stand for that, for him to just not be with us and back us. He displayed a lack of respect for the citizens' voices to fully and justly be heard while speaking at the podium before commission. He has challenged and tried to impede upon their voices to be heard by asking them if they pay taxes. He's been dismissive of questions posed and has shown disgraceful lack of concern for one of the greatest tragedies to ever occur within the community, the burning of the lithium ion batteries and exposure due to them. By instead of acting from a place of concern, he flips it around and he spews and cast deflection and shame on the public by, through belittles and exalting, saying, "You guys had a coal plant for fifteen years and you didn't say anything about that," as if to say, "Well, screw your battery burn tragedy." You know?
Your time's up.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you for, I hear you.
I hear you.
Yeah. I had more, but hey, you know, it is what it is. But thank you.
Any other public comment?
Can I slowly eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive? I don't understand this right here. At the bottom, it says, "Open for topics." And probably all of us that's speaking, that you don't have our hearts for said yes or something here. So this needs to get changed, either to keep this aside when we talk about the other stuff, or have that taken off.
Okay.
Because it's confusing and it's frustrating.
I understand.
Thinking that you're not gonna hear us.
Right here, and, and in public comment, if you don't fill one of these out, you can still talk?
Yes, but if... Okay. But if you fix the problem, then we won't have a problem.
We'll fix it.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Just take the open forum topic out of there or just?
Or just put it aside because you know that we're gonna be speaking now. It says either yes or whatever. Just set it in a different pile so you know when this time comes up, you can pull it out. Okay, I don't wanna waste my time on stupid stuff like that. So the other thing also is when this non-agenda public comment was part of the meeting, there was minutes taken. You guys could devote your time to us instead of down here like this, right? So how about we add it back in to the original business meeting? That would be fantastic if you guys can get together and have that happen. Because the display that I see, and I'm sure they see the same thing, when we're up here talking, just like they said, you're in here flipping stuff, you might be taking notes, that's great. You might be texting somebody else, you might be seeing what Paul's doing now, since it's after the meeting, whatever, we don't really know. All we know is that sometimes we're disrespected and looked down upon. And so we have to base what we see you guys doing based on history. And past history is not very good. So it's hard to give you guys the benefit of the doubt. Thank you for showing it. That is great.
Yeah, and regardless of whether or not there was someone here taking minutes or not, I would still be taking notes. It's what I do. So I, I apologize if that offends you.
Of course you're gonna say that.
That's what I do. He's entitled to his facts, just like you are.
And that's great. And I also wanted to straighten the record early, earlier also, when I said when Soleil was up here and you told her to be respectful.
No, I said, I said no personal attacks.
No personal attacks, okay.
That's what I said.
Okay.
They didn't say anything.
And I agree with you, which I should never agreed because she was telling, speaking the truth. Truth sounds like persecution sometimes, so it was speaking truth. There was not an attack, it was the truth. It does feel like you are attacking us sometimes because of how and the things that you say to us. That is not necessarily true.
What did we say about you?
Okay, I'm not gonna spend time on this because it's very childish. If you don't know what you're doing, we need to go to a different kind of training because that in itself is disrespectful.
Maybe you need some training as well because I'm not saying anything. Maybe you, I, I've not said anything.
Yes, speaks volumes, Chris.
I haven't said anything about you, but you're welcome.
Okay, so the fire committee, they are doing their darndest to get it done. It's month after month after month after month. They're saying they can't get people. We have two experts in the room. Were you notified, Nancy, for an interview? Alicia wasn't either.
And Alicia, and Alicia was sure that I would ask. You didn't hear that part, I guess.
I did, I was here.
Well, then I will ask the committee to interview her.
Nancy as well.
Yeah.
They have, they've already done their report. They've had it done for like months now.
But yes, I'll ask her.
We're paying our lawyer to continue this so long that maybe we're gonna run out of statute. Isn't that interesting?
Run out of what?
Time.
Statute of limitations.
Statute of limitations. I don't know. It may not be the truth. I don't know, but it's a possibility because it keeps going and we're continuing to pay money over and over and over for something that we could maybe find out the truth right there with those two ladies.
And they want to interview them? Yes, sir.
And you guys do have subpoena power to have whoever they contacted speak up for them, so you could help them. On Paul, I am not in favor for him to stay. I'm sorry, there's been so many things going on. You guys are complicit. Thank you, Paul, for doing everything you possibly can. It's like having your hands tied behind your back. You've got zero, you've got a hundred percent support out here and nothing in there. So you guys are complicit in allowing things to go on. I mean, how many lawsuits, shady connections, conflicts of interest, and non-transparent deals is gonna take place? Is gonna have to take place for you guys to actually see the writing on the wall? It's not gonna end well. I'm just saying, you guys are all, you're all in the same boat. You may not realize it, but you are all in the same boat. I know you guys don't want accidents in town, I'll just say this because my mom has been complaining every time she goes in town. It's really nice that we have the veterans' flags. That's awesome. City gets money for me to put them up, that's great. Too bad that when you're driving, you have to actually look like this to see them because the flags are parallel with the road. They're not like this, so as you're driving, you can see them coming up.
I don't know that they're meant for to look at while you're driving, to be like that.
Yeah, because we have everybody walking the streets on the sidewalks. Yes, that's, that's great.
I mean, there's a lot of sarcasm.
Speaks volumes.
Your sarcasm speaks volumes. I repeat.
I thought the ones on the bridge though, I mean, the, the ones I've actually seen going like when driving up towards Walmart, that they actually faced out to the roads.
Yes, so I think there's some that might be correct, but there's also awful lot.
Would you like us to take them down?
No, I'd like for you to put them in a way that people can see them because when you're driving, you can't see them. They look...
So you want them kinda like when you're driving, they're like?
You know what? Go check it out. You're on your bike all the time.
Yeah.
Take a look at it yourself. I'm...
Yeah, I probably like the way they are, so I'm trying to figure out what you wanted. Trying to get some public input.
This right here is part of the problem. It's very combative.
Your time is up. Thank you.
You guys took some of my time. That does not count.
Have a seat. Thank you.
You took her time.
You took my time.
We talked, but you're done.
You did talk. That's right.
You're done. Thank you. Anybody else?
All right.
Thank you.
You guys do need some kind of classes.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Someone else wants to come up and talk.
I can't wait.
Thank you.
Paul Orbanerfer makes a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. Jerry O'Brien makes a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year. You guys make five hundred dollars for this job. Nothing. So the only commitment you can have is from your heart. And what I've asked for all night long is for you to begin to care about the people more than you care about the city government officials. When they aren't doing their job, it is up to you to stop that. It is up to you to stop that. And when they are not doing their job consistently and they are circumventing the laws of the Constitution, circumventing the laws of this charter where they don't swear an oath for fifteen hundred days, which is a seven hundred thousand dollar misdemeanor offense, that will come to play. Period. You will have to provide evidence of this verbal nonsense that did not occur. The evidence has already been collected that it did not occur. So you guys are in deep, deep trouble for thinking there's any kind of verbal anything that was done. People in the office, people outside that were let go. This man came in with an agenda. He got rid of three departments right away. He's now got rid of the fourth, Service Enterprise. He told you from the beginning, "I can't run a business," and you guys have let him run those businesses right out of here into privatization. What it did was it put fear of retaliation in every government employee's heart and soul. The one thing we all know about government employees is that they get in the government because they want a steady job that pays for their family for the rest of their life. They wanna get in there, they wanna retire, and they wanna do a good job. They don't wanna be bothered and they don't wanna be fired. Okay? That's what they do. He came in, he got rid of ten people within his first seven months of office. Ten. You think that didn't send the fear of God, "I'm gonna lose my job to every other department employee"? You think they're not afraid of retaliation? You think they're coming forward to you? They won't even let anybody interview them for the battery burn. You wonder why? Because they're scared to death they're gonna lose their job because ten people did. And now we've got an IT department that's run by Evero Enterprises, that's a private company doing cybersecurity on our government records for three hundred thousand dollars a year. We had three full-time employees. They're not full-time for us, but they get that kind of money. Our people didn't get that kind of money. They got let go. They got ushered out. This is not okay with the people of Pickwa. They fought hard for those people that were in the sanitation department. Maybe you guys weren't really noticing when you were here because you were too busy taking notes, but they fought hard to keep all those employees. They fought really hard because they love their fellow man. They care about their fellow man keeping their jobs. They care about it way more than you guys do. When you let him privatize everything and send it out and then let him say, "Oh, well, we're gonna keep the service of sanitation sort of kind of." People are confused. People don't know. There is such a lack of quality with that guy that it is unbelievable. And if you think it's just his other employees, you're wrong. He's in charge of everything. He's responsible for every choice his employees make, every single one of them. They're all supposed to be public servants. They're all supposed to care about each and every one of our voices. They're all supposed to care about each and every one of our voices. They're supposed to care about every single one of us. Now, you and I both know that it's hard not to judge people if you don't agree with them. If they disagree with you, you know, you're like, "Ah, I don't want to put up with that person. They disagree with me. They said something stupid. I don't like them. They just want to complain." That's the consensus, that people are just coming here to complain. We're coming here to redress our grievances with the government. That's not going to sound pretty, guys. And if you can't take that, maybe you need to step down. Because it's not going to be pretty. You guys let him trespass four people from speaking their mind about the battery burn. Are you kidding me? And he retaliated against those citizens. He retaliated to the point that there's somebody from a co-organiz that he bulldozed their house, that they were rebuilding. This is unconscionable, unconscionable. And he went to watch. That shows, not a psychologist, but that shows tendencies of either narcissism or psychopath. When you actually want to have the power to watch a home be bulldozed that had a county grant to redo the home, wow. Are you kidding me? Wow. He did it while I was at work. A mechanic, a normal guy, a normal guy. And you guys are like, "Yeah, it's okay, cool. No problem." He has to go get a lawsuit. That's cool. Yeah, let's make a citizen get a lawsuit against the city, another lawsuit. He will win. He will win. This is not okay. This is happening on your term. You're allowing it. Patrizio tried to stop it. He told him it was illegal to trespass those people. He didn't listen. He said, "Do it anyway." Do it anyway. That's sick, you guys. And you've got them giving you ordinances that they're relying on the city lawyer that's loyal to the city. I have Stilton recorded. She represents the city. She doesn't represent you guys at all. At all. Zero search. No representation. Any question you ask, that lawyer's sitting in that seat, it's about them. Protecting their rights, not ours. And if you don't get that conflict of interest and make a significant change, you are all complicit. You've all been told. It's all recorded. It's on public channels. You now know.
On YouTube, too.
Yep, you now know. And if you don't take constructive action, you're violating your oath, and you all signed it. I reviewed them all, looked at them all. You all have an oath. That's a legal binding requirement. The fact that you don't think Paul's was legal and binding, that's really sad. The fact that Ducek doesn't think it's legal and binding, that's really sad. The fact that the Miami County prosecuting attorney out of Troy doesn't think it's legally binding, he can only prosecute if it has to do with the juvenile. Are you kidding me?
Your time is up.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
Seeing no more fellow comments, I will motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.